The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Farmington Town Council meeting on July 9th and ask you all to join us for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to suspend the rules of procedures and to move Agenda Item F, Public Comments, to directly right after Agenda Item D, Presentations and Recognitions. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. At this time, we are going to have our public hearing. Paula?
The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, July 9th, 2019 at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers to consider the acquisition of property owned by the estate of Joseph J. and Stella W. Mitchell located at 9485 Mountain Road, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, as its 25th day of June, 2019. Kathryn A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Thank you. And now, we have a presentation about the public hearing, and then we will open it up to the floor for any public comment. Patty? And Liz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we are here today. I'm here on behalf of the Land Acquisition Committee as Chair of the Committee for the acquisition of 9485 Mountain Road. This property was added to the Farmington Land Acquisition List on March 6th, 2019, and the property is located within the red square on the map. And because that's hard to see, the next slide will help. The property is small. It's just under a quarter acre. It's a triangular parcel. It was deeded in 1978 from the Town of Farmington, following road reconstruction to Joseph and Stella Mitchell, who were the owners of the then-adjacent property at 107 Mountain Road, which is to the left of the property in question. The property should have been added to 107 Mountain Road to become part of, to become a larger parcel, and therefore, it should have transferred with 107 Mountain Road when that parcel was sold out of the family in 2010, following the passing of both Joseph and Stella Mitchell. The Mitchells' heirs did not recognize the ownership of this additional property. Taxes and fees have continued to accumulate, and back taxes now equal approximately $3,500 as of April 2019. Subsequent meetings with Patricia Nairn, the one local heir, have found her to be very open to resolving this issue of the back taxes by transferring the property to the town. The property was listed on the town's land acquisition list to provide a safer crossing and more permanent relocation of a section of the New England Metacomic Trail, which is now a national scenic trail. The blue line on the map shows the current location of the trail that requires hikers to walk, to cross the road and then walk along Mountain Road on a curved section of the road. The green line on the map shows the relocation of the trail over 9485 Mountain Road, the parcel in question, and that will allow hikers to immediately access the trail after crossing Mountain Road and avoid them having to walk across, walk along the road for any distance. Acquisition of this property will also eliminate a title question and remove an ongoing delinquency from the tax rolls. A letter of understanding has been signed by both parties and has been obtained agreeing to the transfer of the property to Farmington in exchange for the taxes due. Letters supporting this acquisition have been received from the Farmington Conservation Commission, the Farmington Land Trust, the Connecticut Forest and Parks Association, and the National Park Service. And these letters are being submitted as part of the hearing record. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, and now I'll ask if, thank you, and we'll ask if the public to come up and give any public comment on this issue, specifically this public hearing issue. Okay, thank you. And we will take this up later in our meeting. Thank you, Patty.
Thanks, Liz.
And tonight, we have two proclamations and one presentation. We are going to first have the proclamation from the Tunxess seniors, their 50th anniversary, and then the proclamation with Elizabeth Hathaway, and then our presentation. So, I would ask CJ, would you please, and Marcy Shepherd, would you please come up, representing the seniors?
This is, these are the fun nights, being on the council. You get to do proclamations and thank people for the service they've done for the town and all the nice things throughout. And this one is our second 50th year proclamation this year, which we were just talking, Marcy and I. 1969 was a very interesting year, and you don't think about that year for public service, necessarily. There are a few other things that come to mind. So, it's a pleasure to read about the good things people were doing in 1969. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas, the Tunxess Senior Citizen Association was established by the Farmington Valley Women's Club in 1969 with a mission to sponsor a senior center, and whereas, under Town Manager Stephen A. Flisch and Chairman Jeremiah Wadsworth, the Town Council approved the plan for a senior center in the library building when it became vacant in January 1969, and whereas, the Tunxess Senior Citizens Association held its first official meeting on March 10th, 1969, and members faithfully volunteered to run the senior center for the next 24 years, and whereas, the Tunxess Senior Center Association accomplished its goals to create a senior center, but still offers opportunities for seniors to make new friends based on a mutual interest in top-notch entertainment, and whereas, the Tunxess Senior Citizen Association is a state-certified nonprofit organization with 300 members, and whereas, the Tunxess Senior Citizen Association enhances the lives of its members through live music, bingo, bridge, banquets, and whereas, as a result of the Tunxess Senior Citizen Association's continued efforts, the lives of the people of Farmington will be enriched and enhanced. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on behalf of the Town of Farmington, we congratulate the Tunxess Senior Citizen Association for its 50th anniversary, dated this 9th day of July 2019 at Farmington, Connecticut. Nancy N. Nickerson, Chair of Farmington Town Council. So, congratulations. And we like to give out Farmington caps. Now, we're giving one cap to an entire association.
All right. We'll take turns swearing, yeah, I promise. Thank you.
And I just want to add, I didn't at the beginning, but Marcy and I served on services for the elderly together for a number of years, and Marcy was president with the seniors. And you've done a great job, and you were the one that brought the "It's Good to Get Out" to the seniors. And it was, it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity for people to get out, to go to the movies, go get an ice cream, and we really, it's wonderful to have people like you, Marcy, in our town to do so much for our citizens. So, thanks.
Thank you. My pleasure.
And as CJ said, this is the fun stuff. When we have these different proclamations to give tonight, I'm here to give a proclamation to Elizabeth Hathaway. Read one for her. She will be 100 years old on August 20th. And Elizabeth, we wish you an early happy birthday, and I would like to read the present, the proclamation. Whereas Elizabeth Hathaway was born on August 20th, 1919, and whereas Elizabeth Hathaway was born and raised in her family home in West Hartford, Connecticut, and now resides at Middlewoods in Farmington, and whereas Elizabeth Hathaway has one sister named Mary, one brother, and two nephews, and whereas Elizabeth Hathaway graduated from West Hartford Public Schools, attending Center Schools, Sedgwick Middle School, and Hall High School, and whereas Elizabeth Hathaway attended Duke University and studied sociology, and whereas Elizabeth Hathaway lived and worked in many places throughout her life, including West Virginia, Florida, Texas, California, and now Farmington, Connecticut. Whereas Elizabeth Hathaway loves nature, animals, and is an avid bird watcher, and whereas Elizabeth Hathaway attributes her and her siblings' longevity to the fresh fruits and vegetables that her mother fed them growing up, and whereas throughout her life, Elizabeth Hathaway has enjoyed knitting, history, and is known for always being generous and compassionate and loving to all that she called family. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Farmington hereby wishes Elizabeth Hathaway a very happy 100th birthday and officially declare August 20th, 2019, as Elizabeth Hathaway Day in Farmington, dated Farmington, Connecticut, this 9th day of July 2019. Nancy Nickerson, Chair of the Farmington Town Council. Happy birthday early. The Farmington Village Center Streetscape Improvement Final Report with the BSC Group. And after this, the reason we moved the public comment is so that the public, while you can do this, you can come up and make comments right after the presentation rather than later on in the meeting. So, after this, we'll ask for a public comment. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, council members. Pleasure to be here tonight. And before I make a brief presentation, I just want to say it's been a fantastic experience working with town staff, the Village Center Committee, as well as town residents on this project. It's been a real collaborative project, as many people in the room know, because they participated, and I think the results will show that. Overview of the present, overview of the presentation. Want to quickly talk about what we were asked to do for the town. We got a lot of public input. I'm going to give a very quick summary of that. More importantly, talk about the recommendations that are in the report, and then open it up for questions and talk about next steps for potential funding sources and implementation of the recommendations. First of all, what was BSC Group asked to do? First of all, we were asked to pull together a very basic base map of the project area. We did not do ground survey. We took existing, what's called GIS information, aerial photography, to pull together a map of existing conditions, so we all know what we were talking about. We then went out in the field and documented existing conditions. We had staff that walked the whole project area, which I'll show you in a minute, and documented what's out there now, what we call challenges and opportunities. So, what's good and what needs to be addressed. We had numerous meetings with the steering committee, five meetings altogether, as well as some additional meetings with town staff. We also met with stakeholders. We had a day of meetings with some of the institutions along the study area, such as Miss Porter's, St. Patrick's Church, Hillstead, Livewell, the Congregational Church, Farmington Garden Club, the principal from the elementary school, and we also met with some key town staff, DPW Engineering and Planning. So, we got some specific input from those different stakeholders. And we had a public meeting, which was very well-attended. We were very happy with the people who came out for that. And then the town also posted an online survey on the website, so additional people gave input through that. We prepared recommendations, talked them over with the committee, came to some final recommendations, then we prepared the costs. None of this is cheap, and I'll go over, I'll discuss that, and then talked about implementation, if you need to do this in phases, as well as some potential funding sources. So, with that, I want to, this is a map of the project area. I'm going to just step behind me very quickly, so everybody understands what we were asked to look at. So, we were asked to look at Route 4 from Mountain Spring Road down Route 4 to the Farmington River, and we were asked to look at Route 10 or Main Street from Route 4 all the way down Scott Swamp Road. So, that was our study area, looking at those two roadways and the abutting properties, but mainly focusing on the roadways. Again, as I mentioned, we did a site analysis. We went out and looked at existing conditions along the corridor, things we wanted to, that should be highlighted, preserved, accentuated, and then we did a very detailed analysis of the condition of existing sidewalks in the area, because it was clear through some of our meetings with the committee that was going to become a very important issue in this project. Again, we worked with a steering committee. The members are listed here, and thanks again for everybody's participation, and some of the key town staff that participated also. As I mentioned earlier, we received public input in a number of different ways. One was a public meeting on March 21st. We call it more of a workshop, where we gave an overview of the project, and then had what we call different stations set up around the room. I believe in total, we had five different areas where people could provide input on specific topics, such as crosswalks and sidewalks. Another area dealt with site amenities and furnishings and materials. Another area dealt with gateways into the Village Center, and then we had like a general comment board, and just, you know, what do you like most about the Village Center? So, there are a variety of ways for people to give input. And then after that, we also put a survey on the town website, which asked some of the questions we asked at the public meeting, and people were able to answer those and tell us what their likes and dislikes, and approximately 114 people participated in that. So, it was pretty good input, and it was taken into consideration. It wasn't, it wasn't as though what people voted was what was in the plan. It was just part of the whole information gathering from the public that was taken into consideration. I'm quickly going to go through these, so everybody understands what we asked at the public meetings, what we asked online. We asked about preferences in sidewalks and crosswalk materials. The preference was a sidewalk with concrete walking surface with brick accents along it, and you'll see the top vote getters are highlighted on these slides. We asked people what they preferred for wits, and unfortunately, I missed mark this one. I apologize. It was, well, the top vote getter was 13. I'm sorry. No, that is correct. And then for crosswalks down at the bottom, they liked the crosswalk pattern that was recently installed on Route 4. Again, kind of incorporating that brick type of look, even though those actually are not bricks. It's colored asphalt. We asked about lighting. The preference was, they liked the lights that were put along Route 4 in the recent project, and I'll get back to that in our recommendations. They liked the hang, people liked the hanging flowers off the light poles, as you see on the bridge over the Farmington River. People preferred kind of a simple, classic sign look for any type of signage that was needed in the area. These are mainly signs to point out public facilities, as well as any directional signage. And then if there were interpretive panels, again, the lower right shows a preference for that. Again, keep it simple and crisp and clean. Then we got into some elements that may or may not be needed, such as walls and fencing, and people preferred the brownstone, which is, as you know, found throughout the area, and actually, the town has some brownstone in stock that could be used as necessary, and kind of simple, classic fence, picket fence that was in the area. When it came to plant material, I have to admit, we put this together, but the street trees all look similar. They're just different times of the year. But there was a very strong preference for adding street trees, I'm sorry, to the corridor, wherever possible, and there was a very strong interest in upgrading the plant material that's used in the traffic islands that are along Route 4. Again, there was some voting on some fencing. I forgot to mark the top vote getter here. It's the upper left, and again, it's kind of that classic picket fence. I didn't highlight anything on the screening fence down at the bottom, because after discussions with the committee, we decided that really wasn't a type of fencing we wanted to use for screening. We would do screening with vegetation. We asked about site furnishings. There was definitely an interest in bike racks and keeping those very simple, interest in benches, similar to what was used in Unionville, and trash receptacles, again, very simple design for those. And then we asked about public art, something to add some interest to the area, and we didn't ask people to pick a particular art style, like you see on this slide, but there was definitely some interest in adding some sort of public art, something of interest into the streetscape environment. So, taking that all into consideration, we then generated overall vision and goals for the improvements that were being recommended for these two corridors through the Village Center. And I want to point out a couple of highlights from this. One is that whatever we, the town decides to do in this area really needs to build off of past planning studies and comprehensive plans. We read those when we started the study, so this all builds off of that anyway, but it was clear that this should be a continuation of previous planning efforts. A real desire to preserve the historic Town Center character that's here now. People felt the area really had a distinct sense of place and really needed to accentuate that. Safety was very important. Making the sidewalks and crosswalks, what we call university accessible, accessible to all, people with all types of mobility issues or concerns, sight, hearing, everything like that. And in doing it a way, again, that enhances that kind of New England Village character. Again, safety was brought up, and any of the site amenities and features and materials, again, tying into the historic character. So, you start to hear some of these same themes over and over again. So, then, the final recommendation. So, again, building off of what we heard from the public, what we heard from the committee, and then some discussions amongst staff, committee, and ourselves at the BSC Group, we came up with these recommendations. So, for sidewalks, the recommendation is, where possible, put in a five-foot-wide sidewalk with brick banding on both sides to give it some interest, and that's what you see on the upper left. In areas where the sidewalk needs to be close to the roadway or close to the curb along the roadway, we didn't want a thin little grass strip there, so where that sidewalk gets close to the roadway, as in two feet or even narrower, put the brick banding on that side of the sidewalk, and that's what you're seeing in the middle. And then, because there are existing features along these sidewalks, there are some mature, healthy trees, there are some walls, there is fencing, there is vegetation. There may be places where the sidewalk needs to be narrowed, and we said, don't go any narrower than three feet. Three feet is what is the minimum for universal accessibility, and where you narrow it down, keep that three-foot-wide walking surface concrete, and that's what you see in the upper right. But that's a case-by-case basis. As much as possible, we're trying to make this five-foot wide. And just for reference purposes, sidewalks out there now, and I'm going to, well, the sidewalks, new sidewalks along Route 4, the concrete part of those sidewalks are generally five feet wide now, and then there's the brick banding along that. So, those are generally five feet wide, some are a bit wider. As you go down Main Street, there are sections of sidewalks there now that are five feet wide. Some of them are just under five feet, you know, four and a half to five feet, but there are some sections that narrow down to three feet, but those are very few. So, for reference purposes, the five feet wide is consistent with a lot of what you have out there now, and very similar to other areas out there. For crosswalks, what you see on the bottom here, it's what's, again, it's a crosswalk that gives the appearance of bricks, but it's actually what we call a resin that's colored and stamped to look like bricks. So, it's a very stable walking surface, again, building off the universal accessibility theme, but brings that interest of that brick and the kind of the warmness that brings to the, to the roadway. And again, these are just some examples of the five-foot wide with the brick bands on both sides, and especially the image on the lower right is, that's the fire station driveway now, which needs to be wide and open for public safety purposes, but if you look at the picture on the left, the existing conditions, it's, there's not a clear pedestrian path. So, by adding a sidewalk such as this, it really defines the pedestrian space and just helps avoid pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. And this happens in a couple places along the corridor. For lighting, this is the one thing where we deviated a bit from what the public preferred. You may remember, they voted for the lighting style that's along Route 4 now, that was recently added. Everybody strongly felt that the lighting along Main Street, Route 4, should have more of a historic look. So, we're building off of an old gas lamp type of appearance for the lighting that will go along Route 4. And the lighting along Route 4 will be clustered where there are crosswalks. So, we're not talking about continual lighting all along Route 4. We're talking about lighting at crosswalk locations, again, building off of that safety interest, making sure the crosswalks are safe and there's good visibility. Again, there's recommendations for the signage on the bottom, identifying, wayfinding, or interpretive signage. Again, there's real interest in adding street trees, and we have recommended species in the report, but there's basically categories of large street trees for a lot of shade. In smaller areas, it would be a smaller canopy street tree, and then we have ornamental trees where we want certain things to be accentuated or highlighted. Excuse me. And then the bottom, recommendations for the medians, the median plantings, and how those can be improved. And we did this, we also had input from the garden club, which I mentioned earlier, and they, as you know, have been doing a lot in town, so they have experience with what thrives and is easy for them to maintain.
Sir, do you have a question?
Oh, I don't, through the chair.
Not right now. In a minute.
Did he say Route 4 or Main Street?
No, both.
Yeah, but he was describing.
Oh.
He was talking about Route 4. I was thinking, didn't have it on the tab.
Oh, yeah. That was a mistake.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The historic lights along Route 10, the current lights along Route 4 would stay, because those are new. Again, just an acknowledgement that there's interest in, thank you, in public art and some public amenities, which could be the hanging flower baskets. Again, where necessary, fencing or walls, and again, building off the brownstone look. We don't see this needed in very many areas, but if there's a need to add this for a particular reason, this is a look that's preferred. Then we talked about gateway locations. I mentioned that earlier. We had two tiers of gateway locations, two being on, or three being on the outer limits of the Village Center. So, Scott Swamp Road is an area where there'd be a kind of a welcome to Farmington Village Center or Farmington kind of welcoming sign. The other location is not on this map, because it was outside our study area, but people felt that the, as you come off of Route 84, that exit there where there's currently a sign, that should be maintained as a gateway into Farmington. And then as you get closer into the Village Center, doing something at Mountain Spring, Mountain Spring Road area, and Livewell and Hillstead were both expressing interest in doing something on their property in that area. And then again, getting back on the south side, coming up from Scott Swamp Road, as you all know, there's the Route 6 Bridge that goes over Route 4, and talk about doing something on that bridge that says, "Welcome to Farmington."
Route 10. It goes over Route 10.
I keep messing. And I made a point of saying the right one. It's Route 10. Main Street. I'll just call it Main Street. And then these were some of the recommendations of what could be installed at these major gateways. Again, there was interest in bringing in the brownstone, bringing in some simple signage, and in some areas, it might be accentuated a bit. There was also talk amongst the committee, as well as the public input, about what people really, where their priorities were, what their preferences were, what they wanted to see done first, second, third, fourth. This is a matrix that shows how that voting occurred. And all that was then bundled into recommended improvements throughout the project area that could be broken into logical phases, because overall, this is approximately a $3.2 million project. Thank you. And the likelihood of the town coming up with all that money at one time may not be realistic. So, we broke, we were asked to break the larger project into logical chunks of work. This is a map that illustrates where those are. I'm going to come back to this in a minute. Also, in the report, we describe each one of those areas with the Also in the report, we describe each one of those areas with the cost of what it would take to make improvements in those areas. But I'm just going to step to the screen quickly and run through these very quickly. We thought it made sense to make improvements at a long stretch at one time instead of piecemeal all over the place. And from input from the community and the committee, they talked about improving what's there now. And we all agreed that the definition of improvement wasn't really clearly defined. So I'm going to start up here, this is Route 4. And we're talking about starting at Route 4 and coming down the west side or the east side to Meadow Road here as logical chunks of work. As you know, there are existing sidewalks in those areas. Talking about new sidewalks, the whole length in those phases. Obviously, it helps connect a commercial area to Meadow Road. There's another trail that goes out Meadow Road. So for large circulation, it all starts to tie together. Another chunk would be from Meadow all the way down to Scott Swamp. And on the, this would be the west side. And when I say chunks of work, our estimates are around a half million dollars for each one of these segments. Some of them are a little more, some of them are slightly under. So that's the ballpark for that one area. And this area here, there's some existing, and then there are some gaps. So this would give you continual sidewalks all the way down. On the east side, it's a little more difficult because there are more obstacles on that side, such as the ramp up to Route 6. And there's a section here by Meadow that, there's no sidewalk there now and there's a depression. So it's actually, we've acquired almost like a small pedestrian bridge there. That's why these are two different sections here because of the cost. And then up along Route 4, that's another chunk of work. A lot of it was done already, but there's still some other areas to address. One by the Parsons Parcel, the vacant parcel. And we thought that should be done in conjunction with work on the parcel. And who knows when that may happen. So these could all be done at different times, different stages, for different reasons. Again, we gave a description of each with the costs. And then to wrap things up, we also included a list of potential funding sources. And I want to make it clear, there's, you know, these are competitive. Every year, you need to apply. There's no guarantee how much money is going to be available in these and how competitive it'll be to get these grant funds. But they are potential funding sources. Some are state sources, some are federal, and some are private, such as AARP. And again, they have to be monitored year to year. Sometimes they get more funding, sometimes they get less. But they're potential places for you to go and request funding. And in most cases, it's to supplement whatever the town, excuse me, went to put into the project. So I'm losing my voice, and I guess that means I should stop talking.
Okay. Just so everyone knows as well, this information is all on our website. So you can access it through, through the Farmington website. So at this time, what we'll do is have, we have moved public comment up. So we will have public comment. And what that means now is that everyone, anyone can come up to the podium, and you have five minutes to talk, and give us your name and your address. And if you have questions, we'll write them all down. We don't do a give and take right now. We have your, here are your public comments. And then we are going to be taking this up after our executive session, which we're going to have after the public comment, or after a few items on the public comment. So at this time, I'd ask if you have any public comment on this issue or any issue in town to please come up to the podium and state your name and address and your comments. Welcome.
Welcome. Good to see you all this evening. Brian Hendrickson, 165 Main Street, Farmington, Connecticut. I have some prepared remarks, but first I wanted to thank BSC for the presentation. That was very informative. Appreciate the strong spirit of collaboration throughout the process. It was outstanding. So I'm here to thank the council also for sincerely listening to and acting on resident feedback regarding pedestrian traffic and overall design concerns around Farmington Center, including the historic district. I really feel you did a sincere and genuine effort to not only listen, but to put words into action. So thank you very much for that. Please consider taking immediate action to approve all phases of the plan with no more than a two-year implementation schedule. Studies performed by the town staff clearly indicate the need to make significant safety improvements to reduce town and property owner liability regarding sidewalks that have gotten into significant disrepair over the past decades. Given the more than healthy status of the town's reserve fund, very healthy, and the community's desire to see words turned into action as BSC Group discussed, there's plenty of information and previous plans available to the public that this has been decades in the making. So hopeful for a very expeditious implementation of this plan. And in short, you have, we have a great plan. We have the money. Let's make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments on this or any other issue?
My counsel, Sam Reisner, 41 Main Street. And I want to thank everyone involved, BSC and everyone who worked on this. Just a couple comments. I think one of the great things about the village is the variety that is there. So as this work proceeds, I do hope that the variety of historical nature from 1600s all the way through the present, that's one of the really great things that I hope we avoid making it too uniform as we go. But I think that it's really important that this get addressed. The accessibility, taking an eye to universal design. There are many residents at the uni gathering who use wheelchairs who are there. I don't see any of them here tonight. But I really think that there was a very strong message received. And even myself, when I walk young kids, some of the sidewalks really are needing help. So that's an immediate thing. But making sure that we create a village that is pedestrian friendly and very accessible is really important. So thank you and good luck moving forward beyond a plan and into action.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. At this time, we will then need a motion for executive session. And what this is going to mean is we have to have an executive session.
About 10 minutes?
About 15 minutes. So we're going to have to go into executive session when the motions are made, which means you'll have to leave for about 15 minutes and then come back in. So, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I move to executive session to discuss matters concerning pending litigation. Members in attendance to this executive session should be limited to members of the town council, town attorney, and the town manager.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you. And we will have somebody come out and let you know that we're done. Thank you.
I move to suspend the rules of procedures to move agenda item N2 right after executive session O for the acceptance of the BSC Group Streetscape Master Plan.
Second.
All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, so we're now going to look at N2.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the attached BSC Group's Streetscape Master Plan to the Farmington Village Center study area and to establish a working group recommend, recommend strategies to the town council on the implementation of the plan. The working group would consist of the following members. Bruce Charette as town council member, Nancy Nickerson as town council member, Kathy Belansky, town manager, and Russ Arnold, director of Public Works.
Second.
Okay. So now we are going to talk about the plan and our next steps. Bruce, do you want to talk a little bit about it? Just, you were chair of this committee.
Sure. Yeah, so, and I think that...
And Kathy.
Sure.
Yeah. So I think this committee, we worked very, very hard. It was a large committee. We had several meetings. Sometimes they were doubled up meetings. We actually, you know, took a lot of time to really consider public input, really kind of looking at the study areas and really trying to make sense of what really needed to be done just for the community. We also, it was interesting, the BSC Group, when we did the public forum and they had to go up and vote during that meeting, we didn't know what the end results were at the end of the meeting except for just visually seeing the dots. And when the committee met again, before he shared those results, he asked the committee to kind of do their own voting within the committee. And, and he shared our results with what the community put in. And we were pretty, I believe we were pretty right on to what the community wanted. So we felt very confident on what the plan that he was presenting. And we, we kind of accepted it, and that's why it's in front of us right now. I think working with Kathy and her staff, and I know this was mentioned during the presentation, we knew that in order to move a project like this, this size, forward, that either current council members or future council members, depending on the timeline of implementing this plan, we wanted to chunk it up into two smaller phases in terms of our capital improvement plans, as well as taking advantage of any state or federal reimbursement. And I think that was really key to that. And I, I think that's really it. I think it was a really good plan. I think it's very well detailed, and it gives us a lot of options. It's actually a plan that we could implement and work off of. And it's a good plan for Kathy and her staff to really start working on it.
And I'll just, just the only thing I want to add is that I want to thank Kathy and her staff for it. We did have a lot of meetings, and a lot of detail was done aside, as was mentioned, aside from our meetings. But also thank the committee. We met a lot of times, and there was a lot of, there was some legwork as well as meeting here at the, at the council chambers. But I want to thank everybody, because it was quite a large committee and a great group. So I just thank you for all your input and all your time for the whole committee, so. And with that, what we're going to do is, is open up for questions. Because the council, people that weren't on the committee, I'm sure you have questions. And we can have BSC answer any of the questions. You're here tonight, so, so the council. Oh, Kathy, do you want to say anything first?
Well, I just wanted to maybe just say one thing about when we, the group, and kind of, you know, ask some questions. But I see a couple of things that I think are important. And the first thing is, is that, you know, after some questions, is that the next step on this, I think, is that the area has to be designed. It has to be surveyed and it has to be designed. And that's because there's, you know, we don't know, there's some places where, where there's rock walls, there's historic homes, so where the sidewalk exists. So again, in my mind, how I envision this happening is that we, right after this, start going in-house with Russ, we start designing the whole area and having it surveyed. Because we're not going to be able to do anything until that's done. And then the idea, just so, it was my idea of having this working group, and what that's about is really just having, which I like to do, and we've done that quite a bit, is that when, having a working group of the council that's working with Russ and I in this area, just to look at it as we come up with our implementation strategy. And to look at it, and when we're designing it, so we have buy-in, we can report back to the council as a group that everyone understands and takes it one step at a time. So really, that was my thought of having the working group here. Because again, we're striving for the larger sidewalks, but there's going to be a lot of complicated issues to go through it. As Jeff had said, there's, but I think that they're doable. And once we get the survey done, we can see which is the easiest areas to do. But I think that, you know, we want to have a good plan and we want to get, you know, do large chunks of it. And that's why I like the phasing part of it. And we can, I think, show a lot of progress. So that's really kind of my overarching thought on this.
Okay. Thanks.
Madam Chair. Oh. I, I guess my first thought about this was, or is, questioning the need for the working group. And Kathy, I appreciate you chiming in on that because that does help. But I guess my concern with setting up a working group at this point is, to some degree, it seems like a second guessing of the work and recommendations of the Village Center group and the BSG plan. And I'm just, I wouldn't want to set up another group that's going to bog things down at all. I'm wondering if it wouldn't make more sense to, you know, move forward, allowing the town manager, and as Kathy mentioned, her other staff to prioritize and coordinate things and just... With reporting, you know, back and forth with the council certainly, and the Village Center committee, and wondering if that would be more expedient or efficient way of moving forward.
I'd be a little bit nervous about going back to the village committee because again, it's a very large committee. But I could, I could vet things off of that. But I actually, I thought it would move faster with more with a small working group than going back to the committee. I mean, I'm not against that, but I guess what I get just nervous about, and it's not just this project, it's any project, is that there's a lot of different things that are going to happen about, you know, because of the size and what trees are important and what stone wall. And us, I would hate to see Russ and I come back and make all these recommendations and come back to the council. And everyone's like, "I love that tree, I didn't want that to happen. I would like this. This stone wall is more important. I really like this bench. What about that bench?" And so again, this is, these are guidelines. And it's, there's a lot of specifics about exactly what bench and what tree. And all I'm saying is that having kind of a council input and working together just to expediate it. But again, we can do it and come up with our recommendations. But I just get worried that I bring something to the council and then we take four steps back because everyone likes a different part of it.
This is a fairly large group as well. Okay. Well, that's where I'm...
So thanks to the BSC Group. I didn't get a chance to go to many of the Center Village Committee meetings, but this was, I thought, a good presentation and a good way to sum it all up. So a few questions. I guess for starters, if, when we talk about, we need to design it, are we talking externally designing it with a firm like we do for like a school? Or are we talking just internally?
I thought we were going to internally do it.
Internally designed. So there's no costs with that?
Yes, there's always costs.
Well, I know, but there's no external cost.
There's no external cost, yeah, correct.
As far as the matching grants go, what, and this might be a better question for you, is, and I know nothing's a guarantee, but what are we looking at as far as grants go? Whether it's the state, the feds, you know, I know there's, there's different. But what are we expecting?
I think I could help answer that. So for instance, in Unionville, we did a grant, and we did a grant for Route 4, a good grant that we would be looking to apply for as the steep grant. So for Route 4, all the sidewalks and enhancements and things like that, we applied for a steep grant for economic development and received the steep grant. And that was down the Route 4 corridor, all those enhancements and things like that. In Unionville, we applied for two different steep grants worth about $900,000 in Unionville. And that was, not all of that was for sidewalks. Again, it was for sidewalks, it was for enhancements down there, it was for benches, very similar to this. So we've already got, received a $350,000 grant for the steep, for Route 4. And I think, according to Rose, we're waiting for that next grant round to open up. And I think the maximum amount is $500,000 for steep grants. The other grant that we've used before and we're hopeful that maybe there would be some openings, and there's other grants too, is the Main Street grant. In Unionville, we did the Main Street grant, and that took us on South, no, Plainville Avenue. And that was a $500,000 grant. So there are large, and that's why I think...
That's state as well.
That's the, Main Street is state, Rose?
It was funded federally and then given to the state.
And, and I think one of the reasons why we broke it up into $600,000 or $500,000 ranges is because that's typically, I think, where these grants, where we've been able to get those grants, those dollar amounts.
And what triggers getting the grant, like getting that $500,000?
We apply for it, and then hopefully we get it.
Off of the basis, is it matching like one-to-one, or is it... Off of the basis, is it matching like one to one, or is it?
They're all different, they're all different. The Main Street Grant had some matching funds that we had to match. So the Main Street one, we were required, it wasn't, I, I, we're trying to think of a better word for matching because it's, when you say match, you think it's the same number, but it wasn't the same number.
So it's not a one to one.
It wasn't a one to one. The steep grant in Route Four was, was closer to a matching type of grant where it was almost one to one. And it really, the, you, you receive more grant money typically if your town is putting up more money too. That they show that. But they've also, in Unionville, we received two of our steep grants with very little matching money. But we also had done studies and have done some other things. But that was quite some time ago. It looks now more and more that these grants, they're looking for some money on the town side.
Is, so that was kind of the next part. So as far as the grants go, like, like for the school construction grants, sometimes it's, like the roof project we did as an analogy, if, when we were deciding whether to rip the entire roof off and put a new one down, or just put a second roof on top of it, one of the arguments for doing the more expensive option was, we had a higher probability for getting an extremely large grant. Is that how this works, or we get, we would get the grant either way, whether we did localize things? Or whether we, we would get, either way we?
It's more about, I mean, we usually like, for grants, our steep grants, we've applied for the maximum, which was sometime, I think either four or $500,000, $500,000, depending on what the year was, how much the maximum was. And then again, you're rated more not on that, but about, the steep grant is for economic development and things like that. So you're rated higher if that's what your grant is worth and different things like that. And our projects that we've applied for steep, we're applying for the maximum because they cost more than that amount. You know, there are steep grants where people go and do a steep grant for economic development, and it may be a small portion of sidewalk and that's only valued at 100,000. So that, their steep grant is 100,000 dollars. There's usually a pool of money that the gov, that they break out into the different communities. And there's other grants too, as a, there's the Loews of grant money, there, as there's other sidewalk grants, there's the school safety types of grants, which we have not really looked at too. We, meaning my side of, of school probably has. So what I'm doing right now is that we're having my staff go through all the grants that are mentioned in the report, the ones that we're familiar with, and trying to find out when the due dates are, what the requirements are, and what the ma, is the, what the maximum amount of money you can apply for, for them.
Okay.
Madam.
So you can go, you can come back to me later.
Okay. Go ahead, Patty.
I want to go back to Beth's comment on, what she brought up on the working group. I, I appreciate your insight, Kathy. I, I just don't quite understand, I think, the purpose of the working group in terms of, because it's written here to recommend strategies to the town council. And I see the plan that we've gotten as being, this is the plan to move forward. And I don't, I see the working group as an extra step in the process in terms of, it's still, it's two members of a seven-person town council. So rec, so those two members coming up with a plan to implement still has to go before the full town council for approval and agreement. And I'm trying to figure out how that expedites the process.
Well, again, usually, and again, I'm not, I just find it that it's, it usually is helpful. Is that when there's so many different things that possibly about the style of the different things, what the implementation, if we have, are we starting on this side or that side? Is that we're working as kind of a team, that I'm not bringing something back from my staff without having some input that all of a sudden we have 500 people in the audience because I, our recommendation is something that wasn't, it wasn't the strategy, the implementation strategy is someone else. I don't know, that may not happen. I just think sidewalks in general, my experience in sidewalks, is, is not necessarily an easy issue. It's not necessarily an easy issue. And I have always, since I've started here, have worked committee-based on more issues that are not that easy to get, make sure that the council has buy-in on both sides of the aisle, everyone understands, and that we're coming up with our strategy as an overall team, as a council and staff team for different things. And that, this, again, it may not be like that, but I just caution, this is, would be somewhat of my standard procedure. But I'm fine, I mean, either whatever the council wants. I mean, we have a great plan and we can come up with what our thoughts are on it and bring it back and report to the council. I'm fine with that.
Well, one of the things, okay, one of the things that Bruce and I talked about when we met with Kathy was expediting the process. And our feeling, and you, Bruce can chime in, but, was that if we were part of the, the big committee and we, there were a lot of things talked about in the, in the big committee that still have to be reconciled. And it's not that Bruce and I can do that on our own. I mean, it's not, we're not going to be, I don't foresee us bringing you a recommendation of this is what we're going to do. But there are a lot of pieces to this. A building that was going to put a sidewalk in front but doesn't, they're holding off because TPZ said wait because we're doing sidewalks. There's another building, how much money is that going to bring in? How, how are we going to do it? I mean, it's not things I'm going to decide, but we, Bruce and I, together would have those, the input from Kathy, Russ, Rose, if need, you know, whoever else from the town. But we would just start having some conversations. So it wasn't that we would be holding it back, we would just be, and they're going to be doing their work. But we would be, I saw us as being almost a, an additional ears and eyes and voice to things going on and, and asking questions, so. And then bringing it back here, but really not, I mean, not holding them back at all. It's just kind of people from the council, as Kathy said, in past history, we've had some kind of little group to have some discussions and then come and talk about it with the council. So that was really only, not to hold anything back, but exactly the opposite.
I have a follow-up question. So then it's to take, I want to make sure that, because implementation means different things to different people. So the plan would be to, plan, the goal of the working group would be to take the plan that was created, not change it, not create additional, not to take this plan and to implement this and not necessarily to rework different components of it. For example, the plan talks about implementing things in phases. So that way, in my mind, that's a comprehensive solution to move things forward. But, so the working group wouldn't be looking to change the recommendations of the plan? It would just be looking to?
Help with the implementation of it.
Well, and my, and my hope tonight would be that we would move this, this plan forward. Because I think what we, through the committee, and unanimously decide, you know, we all feel this is a really good plan. How we can, and the timeline for the plan, as we talked about, you know, we'd like to do this yesterday. But the money and the, and the design, we can do it in-house, which is something we can get going with right away. And, you know, maybe there are, maybe we get a school grant for a piece of it before we, so that then we'd have to look at implementing that piece before another, you know. So as things unravel, unfold, we're going to certainly be bringing it to the council. But as far as this plan implementation in pri, in a priority, there are no priorities specific, depending on what we, as he discussed, what we get for grants, what we can put in our, on our capital. You know, it's all going to unfold as we see what the possibilities are and what the, we have to look at some of the, our code, our ordinance, you know, all of that kind of thing, which we'll have to come back to the council for. But there are just a lot of pieces to talk about and to look at while they're designing it, so.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Kathy, can you explain, because we had a similar project, not exactly the same, but a similar project in Unionville. How did that implementation process work?
We came with design plans to the council when they were, when, we had an overall plan of, between UConn and Yale, and they studied the whole area, similar to this type of thing way back. And then from there, we applied for grants and we had the grants. And then from there, we did sidewalk projects or implementation. And we worked from, Russ, was it the Unionville Design, UVIA? We worked with them a little bit, that's how we came up with the, worked with everyone to, about how, how we're doing. The only thing that's, what I would say would be different about that is that the sidewalks in Unionville were replacement of replacement, very easy. There wasn't all the, the stone walls, there wasn't all the historic trees. Wasn't deciding whether we were putting on one side or two sides, or which one went first, that, that type of thing. It's that, do we go down one side of the street first, or do we go, well, this way? Or do we, and just, again, we're going to be making the recommendations, I think, of trying to figure out the best way to do it, Russ, correct me if I'm wrong. It's just that I think that there's a lot of nuances of what's happening in the village there. And it's not changing the plan at all, it's just how to implement it, guidance about implementing it. No.
Go ahead, anybody, go ahead.
Oh, a couple more questions. So when we're talking about the existing sidewalks that need to be reworked because they're in bad shape, what pers, what, what percentage of the total plan are we talking in terms of like linear footage? Like 5%, 20%, 50%?
That are in what I would call rough shape?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Again, we did that sidewalk analysis, looking at the conditions. And of the existing sidewalks out there, I would say about 10 to 15% to be considered in rough shape. And it could be difficult for someone to navigate because primarily cracking and even to the.
Okay. Was, in terms of the phasing plan, one through six, is that, was that the, what was the basis for the phasing plan? Was that the primary basis, or were there other variables that were, are considered in terms of how we order this?
There was really, the phasing is just about for the money, right? And the money.
Money and it's, it's not a prioritization, it's more defining logical beginning and ending points for chunks of work.
Okay.
Because the committee.
With the committee.
Right.
You know, we didn't want to, we didn't want to have it look like a patchwork, by doing a little bit here and a little bit there and spreading it around, it was, we thought it was more important to get a section done.
Big sections at a time?
A section, we're going to do another section.
Okay.
How you decide to implement that will be up to you.
Okay.
We're not recommending one as a higher priority decision.
And that was a lengthy discussion at the, at the committee that we didn't resolve with what should be the first priority. Do you do an area that has nothing right now, the end?
Okay.
So that you have connectability? Or do you take on the first, you know, the, the first piece of Route 10? That was a big discussion we had and it was, there were a lot, everybody was all over the place with what you did first. And part of that's going to be with the grants. If something comes in with a grant, that would certainly take precedent.
So, okay, so that's not a chronological order that you see there, okay. For the, for the contingencies of 25% across the board, is that, I mean, construction, not in this type of construction, but that just seem, I'm used to like 10%-ish. What is, what's the reason for 25%?
Good question, we had that again.
Yes, me too.
Because we don't have site survey, because there are a lot of unknowns, we could estimate the cost of specific things like lengths of sidewalk and trees and curbing and lights. But there are flooding conditions and whether we're going to be either retaining one somewhere, we just didn't have that much information at this stage of the project. And we'd rather be conservative and say, you need, most likely going to need additional money because, because Kathy mentioned, you know, if people start looking at this, you're going to realize additional things need to be done. And we'd rather be on the high side and have things come in lower than underestimate that and then you don't have enough money to actually do the segments that we are recommending. Industry standard at this level of, in the design process is typically 15%, sometimes 20%. So we did bump it up, we did go higher than typical, but because there were a lot of unknowns and a lot of specialty items.
Got you. Okay.
Maybe add in, depending on the section you're working in.
Thanks. First of all, thank you. First of all, I'd just like to thank the Farmington Village Center Committee for all their hard work. I know you guys put in many hours and many meetings to come up with this comprehensive plan for us. In terms of like the new trees that would be planted, would the town be maintaining that? Or would the person, or would the property owners be maintaining that? Or is that something that was even discussed?
Well, the, the new trees would, it wasn't discussed and that was, the new trees would go not, historically, they would not go on town, town land. So it would be something we'd either decide that we would be doing that or we would be putting it, asking if a private property owner would want to have the tree there.
Kathy, can I?
Yeah, sure.
So I, that topic did come up, and I think typically a lot of the trees, and I, and I say typically, a lot of them are on state property usually. But knowing that we're putting sidewalks in, there may not be enough room for the trees. I think that's the issue.
I think, Russ, now with the state, is, I know with the town, the town no longer puts any kind of trees on the town property. Is the state, will the state allow you to put a, a tree on that state property?
Because I know in front of the, because we had this conversation when we had the town planner attending our meetings, the Farmington Historic Society, someone planted two trees. We don't know if that's the state or if that's Farmington Historic Property, planted it right on the state property, so.
Yeah, I.
There's some inconsistencies.
Oh, yeah, there's definitely. I mean, and we have a lot of trees on our town that are on the right-of-way, which were planted on it. And the state on why Route 10, a lot, all of them are there. So again, it's really, again, depending on, you know, it's not that we, that the state's never had you be able to do it. It's not that the town has never had to do it. But if it's on your right-of-way, then you should be maintaining it.
CJ?
Yeah, as everyone's saying, I appreciate all the work. This is a great document here, a lot of good information in it. I was at this meeting, I got to put my dot right up here. I'm not in the picture, but I think Portia put me out of the way, because she didn't like where I put it, so. But just a couple of questions. First, I like with the sidewalks, you were, looks like you had some flexibility. So when you're going through the historic district, if there are trees, if there are walls, things like that, you've got, you know, between three and five feet, which seems like that answers a lot of questions. How was the historic committee? I know they had a representative there, were they good with the concrete versus the blacktop? Because I don't know, I know they have strong opinions on things like sidewalks.
I could probably answer that. So yes, John Renahan was the representative of the historic committee. So actually, I just realized he's in the audience. So he could answer it himself if he would like to in terms of the concrete versus asphalt.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the only, the Farmington Historic District Commission or committee, when we talked about it, and still, to add to that, it's just, I still think, and we still think, we need to be closer to like guidelines. So the guidelines on the sidewalk being that, that was public opinion, but also what the committee recommended. So we're fine with it, but again, since I got 30 seconds to talk, the more we go to guidelines for the town in general is helpful for everybody.
Yes. Sure.
And we also recommended that the concrete, the interval color, since there'd been color added to it, tone it down, it wouldn't be the stark white that we've seen a lot of places.
That's good.
It would be more of a brownish, natural looking color. And that would be something that committee, whoever, would decide.
Okay. The phasing, the only, and you answered part of this, I think, what you have is phase five there. You were saying until the work is done on Parsons, you wouldn't do anything on Route Four. From, from Main, that's okay, from Main Street to the bridge, which is mostly done, is that something you would consider, you know, putting with that first phase? Because we've already replaced a lot of that sidewalk when we did the bridge. So, and when they did the road, I don't think there's a whole lot more to do other than on the other side by the historic building, and I don't know what ends up happening with that. But most of the sidewalk from Main Street towards the bridge is already done. So it seemed like putting that in an earlier phase and just, again, having something we can point to and say, we're done with this, that completes that little area right there.
And that was actually part of the discussion of the, at the committee level, was why not do the area on Route Four? Because it is, that's the area you come in on. So that should be one that you do at the beginning.
So, for Route Four?
Yeah.
From the.
From when you come off 84 to the bridge, and in particular, in between Main Street and the bridge, where the gas stations are, those would seem like a spot where there's not a lot of additional. a lot of additional work to be done to make that complete. So, it would seem like that would be a kind of low-hanging fruit, to get something that we can say, look, we've, we've accomplished something right away, and it would seem like an easier one to start off with. But I didn't know whether there's any reason not for doing that.
No, no reason not, except for on the north side.
Yeah.
Where there was a historic building, there's no section of sidewalk, there's talk about redevelopment of that property, and the thought is, like the Parsons, wait till the abutting property gets redeveloped, so the project can work together.
Right, and some of that, as we discussed it, I mean, you, the difficulty is, how long is that going to take? When it's somebody's private property, it's been how many years now that we've been trying to work with different people in different properties to try to have something happen? And it, it goes on. So, in the meantime, it would be nice to have, my thing, it'd be nice to have an area that is complete, and then some of that we have no control over. So, but certainly, it, that is our gateway to, you know, coming in, so.
I just hope we're still going to have choff by the sidewalk, so people can draw on it.
Okay. So, I'll go back to my concern or questions about the working group. Do you see the working group meetings? I know it's a very small meeting, but do you see that being open to the public? Would that be, would that qualify as open to the public, or would it be more?
I mean, I'm open to anything, but I'm, I was thinking it's more at like the staff level.
Okay. I'm just thinking as things go, and you're looking at, you know, okay, we're going to do this phase, and we're in, in front of this particular property where there might be concerns, like you mentioned with walls, it just, there could be communication between concerned residents, or?
Right. And, and again, my whole objective of this was actually to make it, this move smoothly, and do that. Because the other thing would be, is that getting a small working group, maybe not as big as the village committee, of other people in the community to help guide some of, of the, what the plan is, not changing the plan, but deciding, like we just said, I see people nodding their head about doing the part that CJ just said, versus doing the other part. And having some buy-in, I mean, we can make recommendations, Russ and I, of what's on here, but there's a lot, there's good reasons for a lot of the different things, like what you just said, seems very good, but going on another phase seems really great, too, and going, you know, but I think in general, I go back to, until we design it to see how difficult parts of it is, that's really the first step. That's really the first step.
And I also see it, you know, we all know, and as you eloquently put in your report, there are a lot of dollars here. So, if we, if things happen as you're designing, and the, and some grants come through, as you say, you don't know when the grants are going to come through. If something comes through, then that may be something we need to address before something else. And we may find that something like this, right on Route four, only costs, you know, X. It's a cheaper way to, you know, some, so that we're able to do that within our, our budget somehow, you know, with what we have. So, I, I think there are a lot of moving parts, and, and I, I do want to say, I mean, there's nothing we're going to do ever in that committee that's not going to come here, it's just going to be a discussion, and then it's going to be, these are the options, what do you think? You know, so.
Madam?
Yeah.
Question?
Sure.
For Kathy. Kath, and you had said the next step is design and survey the area. Do you mean design and survey the entire area at once, so that way we have?
Yeah.
We're not designing piecemeal, we'll design the full thing.
Yeah, that was my recommendation, yeah.
Other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion just for a slight amendment, maybe, and we can talk about that if that allays any concerns, but that would be to, the motion as it stands now, but add after the word "implementation," but not material changes to the plan? Just so we're clear that things are pretty much going to look like what came out of the Village Center.
You're afraid Bruce and I are going to put blacktop in there?
No.
Not necessarily, but, you know, I just, I think having that assurance maybe, and giving it over to a working group from the Village Center and.
I mean, that was, that was definitely the, my intent.
Yeah, that absolutely is the intent, and I.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thanks. CJ?
Are we ready for discussion?
Go ahead.
The, and you could just put in one word, implementation of the current plan, or the plan as presented. I mean, that would, I think, one or two words should solve that.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think that changes anything and restricts timing or anything.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I don't think that would restrict the timing or change anything.
No.
Just added a word, or?
No, I'm fine, as a friendly amendment, to just put on the end, tack that "as presented" to make that simpler.
Now, does Paula have that?
Do you have it, Paula?
After the word, take out the period and put "as presented" period.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, discussion?
I'll just add that I think that the committee worked really hard, and a lot of hours went into this, and I really appreciate the effort, and I want to make sure that the work that they did is reflective of what the final plan is.
Okay. Yes, CJ?
And just one, having said that, I would assume that does not change the fact that if we run into problems, or there's something within this plan that is not feasible, that wouldn't be something that could be looked into in the future. I mean, every, every word in this plan, I assume there are some things within the plan that might have to be adjusted to make it work out.
I, I would agree with that, because I think, actually, they did a good job in putting that in there, especially where there's areas, there's not enough room, and there's a historic wall. Well, we're not going to take down a historic wall, we're going to adjust, and if it goes from five feet to three and a half feet, or three feet wide, that, that would happen.
Yeah, and I think what will happen is when, again, as typical of any type of plans like this, is when we're, we have it designed, and if it's in a phase, or hopefully it's in a large, bunch of phases, that you'd come to the council and you'd see the design, and that's what you vote on it, and you may say that it's not exactly, because this is really designed, a lot of this is design guidelines, you know, as what John was saying, and then, you know, we may have it narrower by the wall, but you guys would be looking at that.
Right. And I think if we go back, just refer to the executive summary in the report, it really reflects very well, the intention is to continue to keep it historic, but to accommodate, and I think that was really, all through this, it's, you see that. So, it allows us that opportunity financially, or whatever's on the street, the, you know, the biggest, most beautiful tree to accommodate. So, that's the beauty of the report, I think, too. Okay, anything else? All in favor, as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor of the new motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Now, thank you very much. Thank you for staying, too. Okay, our next, we're going to go back to our agenda. So, we now have, any new items? Reading of the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve June 11, 2019, regular town council meeting minutes.
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
I move to approve June 25, 2019, regular town council meeting minutes.
Second.
Corrections? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. No communications? Report of committees? UConn, no report. Land acquisition?
We had a public hearing earlier tonight, we'll be discussing that later. And land acquisition meets Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Green efforts?
Green efforts has not met since we last met, so next meeting is next week. No, we canceled July, August.
Okay. Farmington Village Center Committee, I think we've kind of established that.
Yes.
Farmington High School Building Committee?
Yes, so at the committee's last meeting on June 19, the building committee chose an owner's rep firm, CSG. If you remember, we went back and had a, kind of final round of, of two firms. So, that's CSG Construction Solutions Group, and that firm immediately got to work, getting up to date on the committee's prior work, gathering documents, that sort of thing. And the Professional Partnership Subcommittee that's been working on finalizing the architectural RFP, when they met last, CSG was able to participate with them, that was June 27, and CSG is going to be assisting the subcommittee's members in presenting the RFP to the full building committee, which meets tomorrow. And the plan is for the RFP to be posted no later than Monday, July 15. So, at this point, that's where they are in terms of time. And the Communications Subcommittee met on June 12. Jeff Porter from the Recreation Department in Farmington was invited and came and really helped the committee brainstorm ways that his department could help get the word out about the high school project, and he was able to offer other suggestions about outreach and communications, just based on what he's done with his programs. So, it was really a good bulk of the meeting. And then later on, many ideas were shared and generated on marketing and educating town residents about the project, things like working with the library, the senior center. We reviewed kind of contacts with local media, talked about getting a calendar going, about school events, community events, and really keeping the outreach to a wide variety of audiences. And the members also reviewed the draft website format and content, so that's moving along. And they meet again July 24, 8:00 AM, in Town Hall upstairs in the BOE conference room. And as I mentioned, the full building committee meets tomorrow, 5:00 in the FHS library.
Okay. Paul, anything?
She covered it all.
Okay. Reporter of the council, chair and liaisons. Chair, we, this Saturday, we have the fireman's jamb, well, the fireman's parade. The jamboree begins this week, tomorrow night, I believe. So, hopefully, we'll see a lot of people around there. Board of Ed?
So, the Board of Education had their last meeting of the 1920 school year on June 17. There was a pretty extensive budget impact, impact and business administrators' report. Vince reported that grant revenues are coming in as expected. There was a slight improvement in their self-insurance. Capital projects that we've been talking about for quite some time, since budget season, they've started or will be starting soon over the summer. The cafeteria fund is doing very well right now under Chartwells, and any excess funds, the way that is set up, any excess funds earned through that program go back to the Board of Education. So, it's actually looking like the fund could be in a position to pay for cafeteria equipment in the new, in the near future. So, that was something of note. The board approved the appointment of Alicia Bowman, Principal of Westwoods, to take on a new position of Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations effective July 1 this year. This is a part of a restructuring in, in the administrative, the central office. So, the district has eliminated the business administrator position, Vince's former position, and the position has been renamed Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. So, the restructuring was done to allow more focus on facility improvements and strength and support for the district's business and operations, so they'll be someone who does program and finance and operations. And that's it.
Chamber?
No report.
Economic Development?
The June meeting of Economic Development Commission was canceled. Next meeting is tomorrow, July 10, at 5:30 PM at the Town Hall.
Okay. Farmington Historic District Commission?
Nothing to report.
Housing Authority?
Their June meeting was canceled, and they meet again in the fall.
Human Relations?
They have not met since we last did, so their next meeting is August 21 at 6:30, and then September 18 at 5:30, and those are both at the community center.
Okay. Library Board?
The library's completed the upgrade of their telecommunications system. The new phone system has some enhancements, such as allowing the library director, Laura Horn, to access her messages while she's traveling. Also, the library board is beginning to plan for a wine and cheese event for local businesses that will be held in the fall, but they have not chosen a date yet. The next scheduled meeting is August 21 at 1:00 PM, at, sorry, that's wrong, at 7:00 PM at the Farmington Public Library.
Okay. TPZ?
Yeah, they're, they're meeting next week, so nothing new to report.
Okay. Univille Historic District Commission?
Univille Historic District Commission approved a certificate of appropriateness for a new sign at 10 School Street. It's a Project 22 LLC is the business. They manage and design projects for businesses. It consists of an aluminum, black satin finished post with a composite sign that looks like wood, and it fits in really well with, with the area and the other historic buildings and signs in the area. The July meeting was canceled, is canceled, and the next scheduled meeting is August 1, 7:00 PM at the Town Hall.
Okay. UVIA? Nothing to report. Water pollution?
Nothing new to report.
Any other liaisons? Reporter of the town manager, Kathy?
You have your, the report in front of you, I just, Kat is here, and she is going to give us a brief infrastructure phase two report, so she's going to do that, but also I just wanted to note that our new town planner started this week, Mark DeVoe is the new town planner. His start date was yesterday, and he has a long career in municipal planning with many years next door in Plainville, and most recently in Middletown. We've also hired our new assessor, and that's David Gardner, and he was the assessor from Simsberry for many years, and he'll be starting on July 22. And also, our part-time communication specialist has been identified as a top candidate, and we're currently doing our standard background, and that employee should be on by the end of July.
Great.
And with that, Kat, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay, so in front of you, you have phase two of the infrastructure report. If you remember, back in February, we presented phase one, which was a conditions assessment of the 15 main municipal buildings. At that meeting, we are directed to start phase two, which includes roads, sidewalks, parks, bridges, parking lots, and streetlights. So, a lot of information. So, for this presentation, I'm just going to give you kind of an overview of what's included in your report. I did a few snapshots. Of course, there's a lot more information in there. So, starting with road repair history, we have data going back to 1980, 1981. In the report, it's broken out by year, beginning in 1980, and then we have next-to-the-date roads completed, the total mileage of each one, and the funding source. So, it's interesting to see throughout the years, the way in which we fund the program. You'll see, sometimes it's operating budget, sometimes it's capital budget, sometimes it's a combination of operating and capital, but it's really grown throughout the years, and it's interesting to see the way the funding has changed. We also have projected road repairs out until year, fiscal year 24, 25, again, the same format, projecting out which ones we're going to pave. Sometimes that is a little bit difficult, because utility companies are going to be doing some work, so you can see a bunch of asterisks on that page, that those are kind of contingent on utilities, or, or things that may change in the future. In addition to having this organized by year, we've also put it alphabetically, so people can see now their road, when it was last paved, and when it's projected to be paved. This information was based off of those roads organized by the fiscal year, so it's, it's just a straight alphabetical index of each road that we have done. Again, the ones that are in the future are in different colors, just because, again, those things can change. This is a planning document, but it's also a communication tool, where people can see what's been done historically and, and plan for the future. We also have town maintained sidewalk inventory. This is where we maintain sidewalks for municipal buildings, schools, in front of open space. We've included the name, kind of where that is, municipal, is it in front of open space, is it the library, the length, and we're also still working on indicating if it's been repaired or replaced. So, as we move forward, we'll have an idea of the work that was being completed to date, so that last column is still a work in progress here. We indicate the funding source for those. Operating budget typically has basic maintenance of the sidewalks, the town-owned sidewalks. It has not been funded in the capital since fiscal year 2005, 2006. Maintenance of parks is also included. We have a list of all of the town-owned parks, where it's located, who's responsible for doing the maintenance, and the funding source as well. Again, typical operating, it comes out of the operating budget, sometimes capital, when it's a larger expense for playgrounds or things like that, historically, it's come in there. Bridges, we've indicated town-owned bridges by the number, where it's located, the year built, the We've indicated town-owned bridges by the number, where it's located, the year built, the year it was reconstructed. And this is typically found in the capital budget. In this year that we approved, the 1920 budget, we included $25,000 for bridge repairs, and that's typically a banking account. Town maintained parking lots. Listed again in inventory of the names, the classification, the area square footage. Like sidewalks, we're working on filling out repaired or replaced. And this is typically in the capital budget. This year, we funded $150,000 for banking funds for repaving projects. And lastly, we have the streetlight inventory. This is what takes up the majority of that infrastructure report because we have over 1,500 streetlights in town. So we've identified all of them, indicated when the pole was installed, when the lamp was installed, and the fixture installation. And if you remember, we did an LED conversion in 2018, so that's why that middle column all has the same date. So as things progress and, and we're, we're working and fixing and upgrading, this document will change with it as well. So it's, it's a planning document. We now have all this information that's existed in the past in one location. It's a communication tool. Combining this with phase one, it'll be accessible, easy to read, easy to understand. People will be able to see, you know, for example, their roads. It's something that's gonna work with us in the future, and we continue to update it. So that's where we are.
And I don't know if everyone knows that the full report is on your place too, that was just a summary.
Yeah, that was just a summary. So you have the nice 50-page streetlight inventory.
I see that. Wow. That's great. This is absolutely wonderful. I mean, having it all in one place now. And, and also we'll be able to access this on the internet as well, right? It's all gonna, once you're, once you finalized everything.
Yep, so we're gonna combine phase one, phase two, put them together. It would be in the Town Council Document Central, like we talked about it from the communication report. And again, as, as this evolves and changes, you know, with each capital year that we, when we talk about the capital budget, some of these things will change, numbers will shift, and things will move around. So it'll be constantly updated and available for the public to see.
Great. Questions? Comments?
Just a, great, great work. I, I mean, just looking at the, the amount of detail, I think this is tremendous. I think not only it helps the council, it, definitely anybody in the community that's interested in, in finding out what's going on, they could look at this and see the progress that we're doing. One quick question. In terms of it being available on the internet, is it available where it's just a big document? Or is it gonna be interactive? Because when I look at the, I don't know who would be looking at the streetlights unless it's us. But I, I noticed that they have some dropdown boxes, but I don't know if that's gonna be something available.
Those ones will not be, but what I will do is when I upload it as a PDF, it will be, I'll bookmark each section. So what you're interested in, if you're only interested in roads, you can just click on roads, it'll bring you right to that page. You know, instead of having to scroll through every page, you'll see it. But every time we update the version, the latest version would be up, up there. And again, clickable, so you can jump around in the document.
And I think, and I think some of it, like, I know, like, the roads are, would be interesting.
We may do like, kind of like an executive summary or something at the beginning that has, so people, for the whole report, they, what we think, you know, I think roads is probably one of them where they could look at the roads.
Right, right. Great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kat.
Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion for the Town Manager's report, please?
I move to approve the Town Manager's report.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, any appointments?
Yes. Madam Chair, Agenda Item L8. I move that Inez St. James be appointed to the Town Plan and Zoning Commission for a balance of four-years term, beginning immediately and ending January of 2020.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Item, Agenda Item L10. I move that Sarah Nadim be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals for a balance of four-year term, beginning immediately and ending January of 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Item L11. I move that Harry Marsh be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate for a balance of two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January 2020.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
One last one. Item L12. I move that Jay Tulen be appointed to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate for a balance of two-year term, beginning immediately and ending January of 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? All those. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay. Old business. N1.
Okay, for some reason, I'm out of.
I, I move to recommend the purchase of 9485 Mountain Road to the TPZ Commission for a report under Section 8-24 of the Connecticut State Statute.
Second.
Any dis, oh Kathy.
As you know, is, we had the public hearing tonight, and then it goes to the 8-24 for the TPZ. They give a report, and then it would come back to us for approval at the September meeting.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N3.
Yes. I move to pursue, to pursue the section of 55-10 of the Town, Town of Farmington Purchasing Ordinance. Purchasing ordinance, the bidding requirement under Section 55-1 be waived so that the Town Manager may contract with the environmental designs to complete the landscaping and installation of plantings, pavers, edging, and maintenance in the island at the intersection of Route 4 and Route 10 at a cost of $31,574.04.
Second.
Kathy. What I'm asking here is that, as you know, part of our report, one of the two very big items is the island on Route 4 and Route 10, and also the medians coming through. That we have an upgraded landscaping plan. The garden club worked on a plan for us, and we submitted that plan to our landscaper who does our flowers. Again, we're in the middle of the season, and we really wanted to, we didn't want it to get this done. We think this is a reasonable price, and we would like to have it for this season. So I'm asking to waive the bid requirements. If we don't, then we'd be going out to bid, and this would be something that we'd be doing probably next spring. So I think it, you know, we, Russ has reviewed it, Rose, and it seems like a reasonable price. And we'll have an upgraded landscaping plan at the island, the triangle, and then also on the median on Route 10, Route 4.
And I want to say, some of us went and walked with, the garden club walked and gave their input, and I really want to thank them, the, the members of the garden club that were there. I mean, they did their work, worked with Russ on different plantings and things, and thank them for their input and their help with this. So anyway, any questions?
Yeah. Kathy, this is allocated in our budget already, right?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N3, I mean, 4.
You have your new items in front of you.
Yes. I move to award bid number 289 Brickyard Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project to Tilcon, Connecticut, Inc. of New Britain, Connecticut, at a contract cost of $707,334.50, subject to the, subject to Capital Region Council of Governments and State of Connecticut Review.
Second.
So this bid, I think, was opened yesterday, and this is the low bid for Tilcon, and it's our Brickyard Road repavement project. This is paid fully through the CROG. And Russ, it goes from approximately from Brickyard Road to, where exactly does it go? To Wildwood. And so this project, when would be the start date for it? And it's approximately how long? Five weeks. And that would just be new pavement. Yep.
So is it, it goes from Route 4 to Wildwood? Is that? Okay.
Other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N5.
I move to extend the contract for the purchase of a tread road salt, salt for 2019, 2020 winter season with DRVN Enterprise, Inc. of Weathersfield, Connecticut, at a purchase price of $73.50 per ton.
Second.
Last year, the Town Council approved the award of the contract and for the treated salt. And the contract award was made based on the Capital Region Purchasing Cooperative Bid. It was the lowest bid at 73.50. It allows for a one-year extension if all parties agreed, and we'd like to extend it. We do have money in our budget for this.
Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N6.
I move to award the contract for a purchase of a 2020 International Model HV5007 Heavy Duty Cab and Chassis to Nutmeg International Truck, Inc. of Hartford, Connecticut, at a purchase price of $98,992.98.
Second.
Kathy.
This motion is to contract with a vendor to purchase a heavy duty cab and chassis that will be outfitted to be used as a heavy dump truck by the Highway and Grounds Division for their daily operations, including snow plowing. On the unit is being acquired, will replace a 1987 Mack Heavy Duty Dump Truck. Funds are in the capital budget.
Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N7.
I move to award bid number 281 Transportation and Disposal of Sewage Sludge to HI Stone of Southbury, Connecticut, at a contract cost of $74 per, per wet ton.
Second.
The purpose of this motion is to award a contract for the transportation and disposal of sewage sludge from the wastewater treatment plant to a disposal site operated by the MDC Commission. Bids were open, and this was the low bid. Funds are on from the Water Pollution Control Budget.
Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N8.
I move to extend the contract between the Town of Farmington and Waste Material Trucking Company, WMTC of Farmington, Connecticut, to provide for the curbside collection of municipal solid waste recyclables and bulky waste for a three-year period, beginning July 1st of 2021 through June 30th of 2024, and to authorize the Town Manager to sign the contract extension with WMTC.
Second.
We have contracted with Waste Material since 1993, and they are, they provide our residential curbside municipal solid waste. If you remember, in 2018, we agreed to extend the contract for three years until 2021. Waste material representatives have recently requested the contract be extended for an additional three years so that they have a five-year contract commitment with the town. The reason for this extension of the contract is so that Waste Material needs to replace the trucks they use for collection, but are experiencing difficulty obtaining financing for the acquisition without a long-term commitment with the town. We have reviewed this request and feel it's reasonable. We have, have received a very good service from Waste Material at a good price.
Questions?
So the price remains the same and we're just extending the contract, is that what?
Effective, the rates will be 5.45 per household per month, and for, duh, 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 and then for 12-month period, and then the contract calls for a 3% increase per household rate for the extension.
Madam Chair. Yes. Kathy, will that then change the trash collection assessment to household?
Joe.
It may. I mean, you know, we've been at the same price for it for about five years now. It's a combination of things, the best you can have, the price where it is. Forecast is probably at least the next two years, the price should stay the same. Then after that, it may go up. We actually have a contract in place for the next two years, this is just going up three additional years. We don't have a price cost escalator in that extension. We would negotiate that with the, with Waste Materials. It was actually right there.
Hi, Mark.
Thanks, Joe.
Kathy, and I don't know if, if we know the answer to this, because, you know, I've been hearing, I think it's the city of New Britain, that their trash is being increased due to the recycling? Because now they have to pay to get their recycling out. Is this part of it, or do we know, or do we anticipate more increases because of that?
Probably answer part of that. For us, for us, we can also answer, we answered a couple meetings, the OCRRA, and chances, and the actions would address Patty's question also. What we're to see, this is a travel bar cost, is the tipping fees. CRA or MRM, these extensive renovations to the burn facility, about millions, hundreds of millions of dollars. So we're to see that tipping fee go up substantially. And that's the cause, the bar fee to go up eventually, once they start doing the renovations and increasing tipping fee. Right now, we're paying like $8, $2, $3 a ton. Forecast would be very close to $120. That's what I'm up to, the tipping, oh, tipping fee up to $120, so if you look at it, almost $30 a ton. And there is no market for recycling. There is art on the table.
Yeah.
Actually, markets have done this, of recycling just stacking up, and not, and not fully, there's no market for it.
Other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. N9.
I move to approve the following tax refund totaling $662.48.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We do? Okay.
I move to executive session to discuss matters concerning a sale or acquisition of real estate properties. In attendance of this executive session shall be limited to members of the Town Council and the Town Manager.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions. Okay.